Everybody want to rise for a flag of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the like and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call meeting order, roll call.
Mayor Osgard.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, public forum, you guys would like to address, if you'd stand up on the podium and state your name so the people on Zoom can hear you.
Yes, Jessica, thank you. So, we just wanted to come in today and talk a little bit about some issues we've been having at the campground. We've camped there for three years now. This year, we've decided to stay all summer, so we paid $2,500 to stay all summer long. There's four campers with our group that are all together camping. And we feel, and we've heard, we've had some friends come in and camp with us that were very displeased with the camp host's personalities, the way that they address people, ask people to do things. We've recently had some issues, last year being one. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, there was a tree that was dropped in the campground. You guys had cut the tree down and it had, when they were removing some of the branches and stuff, they had driven into our campsite and created a big mud hole, which we had asked to get resolved that day, because it was going to rain, and it took two days for them to bring any gravel in or anything. We had called the city offices, asking them to take care of it. We were told that we had to wait because it was raining. It just wasn't resolved in a timely manner, so kind of rubbed us the wrong way, but you know, whatever, we came back, we camped this year. We had, it was a Wednesday night, we had Nancy drive by and had asked us, we had a vehicle parked in another camping spot, she asked us to move it, which was fine, so we moved it into our in-laws', my in-laws' camp spot that they were calling into the next day. And she got upset about that, asked me to move it again, which was fine, I moved it, I get the rules or whatever, but she, what we feel is they're not consistent. They're asking people to move when there's really no reason to, which is fine, again, I get their rules, but then they're not asking other people to. So, it's like, if they happen to see you, they'll ask you, but otherwise, they really don't care about it. Prime example, this weekend, there were five vehicles right across from where we were camping, all parked in the camp sites, and they didn't say a word about it, but yet, when we do it, they say something to us. So, we feel like there's a little bit of targeting going on. I had sent all of you a video of an issue that we had that happened this weekend. I don't know how many of you were able to view it or not, but the issue was somebody had pulled out of a campsite and pulled the vehicle in as they were pulling out, because their reservation didn't end until six. And I have my reservation receipt, it says clearly right on the bottom of it, Sunday checkout is at 6:00. So, that individual pulled their camper out and pulled the vehicle in. Her Nancy, or Ruth, was the one who was having the issue with it. She called Nate Beckman, who was on duty that night, she wanted our vehicle towed out of that site, because nobody told her what was going on. She has told us in class that we have one hour to come up and pay for that site once you pull into the waterfront sites that are first conversed. We were there within an hour, which she agrees with on the video, we have proof of it, he had a phone call right when he pulled in, we were there within an hour, and the campsite was paid for. And she created a huge scene about it, and argued and argued and argued. I mean, I, we just don't, we just don't feel like we're being treated very fairly. We're following the rules that they've outlined for us, that they want us to follow, and yet, when we do it, then, and they don't like it, because somebody else wanted something else, they get mad at us. So, we're just not sure where to go at this point. We just, we want to bring it to somebody's attention, so that there's a record of the issues we're having, that way, if they continue to happen, we at least have something under our belt to say, we've come to you guys and said, it's an issue, please help.
So, can you back up just a minute?
Yes.
And the, so the, because I'm not real familiar with the rules.
Sure.
So, the camper, so you had this campsite rented permanently, right, all summer? This site?
So, this is a different site.
Okay.
We had a friend that pulled out and--
With the camper?
With the camper, and his parents were coming up from Jefferson, so since his reservation was until six, he put a vehicle back in--
So, you could get that site.
Right, to save it, so that he still had it--
And that's going along?
--until six. She told me, because when we reserved it all summer, I had reservations, because we like to go to Jefferson and camp, and we like to go to other places, but we wanted our site for the whole summer. And she said, as long as you've paid for it all summer, and as long as when you pull out, you put a vehicle back in, so that you still have something saving your spot, you're fine. You just need to make sure you have a vehicle in there. So, that's exactly what happened. Jeremy pulled out and he put a vehicle back in.
Okay, so I follow that. What I'm not following is, is this was a seasonal spot?
No, this is the waterfront spots.
So, it's not a seasonal spot, so it's, you rent it on a daily basis? This particular spot or--
How long you paid for it, right? The spot that--
Yeah, we don't have a seasonal spot, Vicki. Everybody pays site price for a day.
You already paid for this spot?
So, we have, we have a spot over here.
I didn't pay for this, this spot in question.
We have a spot over here. Our friends Jeremy and Kerry have this spot over here, that was paid for up to 6:00 that night. So, when they pulled their camper out, they put a vehicle back in there, so that something was still in that spot, so that the reservation was not gone.
And what time was that, do you know?
At noon.
Noon.
At 12:45, we went up and paid for someone else to go into that spot, which was Brody's parents, for their reservation, to start the Sunday night reservation onto the next Sunday night.
And she had already called to have it towed?
And she had already called to have it towed, and she was upset, because she had a camper sitting there wanting into that site, even though there was still a vehicle sitting there.
I didn't, I didn't get your text or the video.
That's okay, I can send it to you.
Okay.
I didn't have your number, I just pulled all the city council members off the website, so I can definitely send it to you.
But I, I can show you, I'm personally going to go talk to Ruth, see what the deal is. I'm assuming there'll be some council going to do the same, so.
Yeah, and I mean, we've asked them, we're like, we're, we're good. If you've got rules that you want to enforce, we absolutely will comply, but enforce the same rules for everybody. If you want to complain that we're doing something wrong, we'll get it fixed, we'll do it right, but make sure that you're doing the same for everybody. I mean, we called out in the video, people who are parked across another campsite, right, which is what she asked us not to do, and they had a boat in there, and they were sitting there, hanging out. I mean, they weren't even like loading and unloading, as she originally said they were. So, it's just frustrating for us. I mean, we just, we love the campground, it's super convenient, our kids love the campground, we'd rather camp here than 30 acres, so we're just asking for help, but it's consistent policy.
Well, we're certainly going to look into it.
It's not just us either, I mean, we've got friends that, we've got friends that come from Ames, Des Moines, that come up, and they say the same thing, like, they're very rude, they're unpleasant, just the way they come off, and a lot of the things they say to them, so it's, I mean, if you guys could send a survey out to the people that have camp, I mean, you go around that campground on a Saturday and just pick 20 people out, even five, and ask them about the campground, there's a lot of negative, there's a lot of things that they don't like, that could be changed, that, so they accommodate more to the other people than they do to--
They have their favors.
Yes, they have their favors.
And sometimes it's just not what they're saying, it's how they're saying it.
Yes.
It's not, hey, could you move your vehicle, you know, this is the rule, we don't allow it, it's, whose vehicle is this, get it moved now, and off they go on the offer. So, it's how they're pleasing.
Do we have a list of the rules?
And we've looked on the internet for the rules. I spent yesterday going through the ordinance, trying to find it, just so we were prepared, you know, for tonight.
Yeah, so that's--
Checkout dates, times, and, you know, it's just, we're local, we like to come over here, so I mean, it's--
I can't say I've ever seen the rules, but we'll see.
Yeah.
The main part, main place for their edit is in our campground brochure, or in our campground policy manual.
Yeah, I was going to say, we checked the camp present website, we checked, there was nothing. The only thing is, you get some basic stuff on your receipt, but it's basically, the checkout is, and how do you cancel, and payment policy, and that pet rule.
If you'll send me that stuff, here's my--
Yes, I will do that.
And then I'll, I'll go talk to her tomorrow.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate--
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for camping in Lakeview.
Yes, no problem.
We apologize for your behavior.
We do love Lake, yeah, we do love Lakeview.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda, any additions or corrections? Lot of new motions to approve, so second?
Second.
Roll call.
Boltman.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Do we have a going permit? Vicki Champion, Deck. We have a motion to approve that. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, we have two permits for fences, we have a motion to approve those.
I'll make that motion.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
And we've been asked to close the streets on August 15th?
It's just four street between the drive-through and the corner, right?
Yes.
Like always?
Yep.
Second.
Roll call.
Did you, did you make a motion?
I didn't make a motion, but I can.
Sure, I'll do it.
Let's step up. Dave second, didn't you?
Yes.
Roll call.
Tom.
Yes.
Boltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, 2040, do we have any information else that we need, other than the agreement?
Yeah, I want to go through that development agreement. Development agreement starts on page four, but I'm just going to highlight any of the, any of the proposed changes. Now, having said this, we'll go through some of these changes, talk with, with Dr. Bo about the, the agreement as it's written with the changes in place, he certainly is good to go with that, and would proceed. And we'd be looking for the, the council's approval on this, but there's, there's a couple of changes in here, we certainly want to make sure that we, that we discuss.
The one thing, I just have a question, the one thing that's, that's not changed though is, is the transfer of the 413 property would be right away, like David requested, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that's, they had made some change.
It's, I think it's kind of under number, number one.
Simultaneously developer or executor of real estate contract or debate title?
Yeah, paragraph, underneath the yellow highlighted paragraph as well.
Yep.
So, as you look at the comments on, on the right, the blue ones, JH, that's, that's Bo's attorney, and DJ, Dave Jenner, that's of course, city attorney. So, I don't know if you see any of the comments, one dealt with some language on transferring marketable title, Dave was agreeable and made that change. Okay, let's check out the, the yellow highlighted thing, that's an addition, that the city would, would either survey the property at 408 and 412, so that's of course, 408, and then 412 would be the, the farmer's market property, or have the boundaries conspicuously marked, so that it's clearly visible to everyone who owns what property. I would just recommend to the, to the council, we would go ahead and get a survey of that property.
I think so too.
And that'll help out with any, it'll define for sure that area that was the old walkway between that and the Brotherton building too, so we want to, to get a survey. So, we'll get that done. Next page, this, that thing about the right of first refusal on, on that, and that there is no price on that, on that piece of property, if the city would ever consider an offer from, from another individual, Dr. Bo would have the opportunity to match that offer.
I agree.
Okay, I think you see what the, just a stylistic change from renovation to construction. And then, in phase one, this would be a change, where they, we had proposed previously, developer would complete phase one within four months of the purchase date, and this, this changes this to eight months, and this changes it to eight, eight months, basically to go through the design process. Yeah, Mr. Bo, Dr. Bo's attorney had, had raised this as a concern about being able to get that completed, have the design complete within four months, and would suggest an eight, eight month, eight month time on that. But having said that, as we get to the end of the project, we, we had an 18-month time limit on the project, and that total is the same, is still 18 months, so. Okay, the yellow highlight there about relocating a, a street light?
Is that possible to be done?
Where do you want to put it?
Can't be moved.
Where? Not the front side roadway. Just saying.
It, it is a fire blast hole directly, but by the time we would, would have that additional five feet into the farmer's market, very close to the property line, just right as is, so.
I would think that until your survey, maybe you just want to wait on that.
That's why this, says that the, that the city would relocate this into a spot that's mutually agreeable to the city and the developer, and if it's close to the property line, that's where, by rights, it should stay. See a comment on there about the, the, to have the plans prepared according to the plans approved by the city, but, and that would just largely be done through the process of getting the building permitted. Okay, had some concerns about the city finding reasons for delay, that if the council finds good cause. So, is really, Larry, of course, having, having been bitten by this COVID-19 deal for, pretty hard here for the past several months, that, that, that if something like that were to happen again, that we, the city would not determine that to be good cause. Okay, so, anyway, good cause is determined, these are Dave Jenner's definitions then about the highlighted areas, or public health, safety, welfare, delayed due to the detrimental national or statewide lockdown, those type of things, inability, the schedule of the contractors, force majeure was another one that, that Dave Jenner had suggested, and then any other event bound by the council would be good cause, so that those would not be identified as the city's then as acceptable reasons, or they would be acceptable.
They would be identified, and, and so, do they, so they haven't seen what Dave has listed yet?
Yes, they've reviewed this.
So, they're okay with E?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. That is the, that is the change, the, with those changes--
So, the 18-month period starts on the day of the transfer?
Date of, date of possession, yeah, that's when the, that's when the effective date of the, how's that? Yeah, it's--
Anybody have any more questions on 2040? I'll make a motion to approve 2040. Second?
My second.
Roll call.
Boltman.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, we have a report from the council's personnel committee. Name or body?
Well, we talked about, with our police force, and some of the things we've got to determine is that we, we need to figure out a way to, how, I want to say, make this more attractive, and we had discussed about some sort of incentive, some sort of, you know, like we did with Jeremy, when, when providing so much bonus money, I guess is what I'm trying to say, in, in order to entice maybe, get some more applicants, trying to determine how many, or if this will attract more people. Right now, it's kind of a tough situation, what's going on with, you know, whole, round this all over, and it makes it tough, and. I know, Royce and I, we talked about, Royce, you were talking about dudes from, thinking about retirement, and--
Yep, yep, yep.
And I guess, I, I'd like to ask you, you know, have you got a date in mind, or what you're thinking?
As soon as we hire our third person, I'm going to submit it.
Okay. Well, I think that was important, that we get a--
What I could point out, the reason I'm waiting for a while, when Jeremy and Michelle both left, I was the lone guy, that's impossible, so I'll write till we can hire, get the last guy hired, but hopefully that's coming real soon.
Did we have any part-time guys at that time when they left, or?
Yes, we did.
Did it?
Yep.
So--
So, we have three part-time now, right?
Right.
Well--
Well, one that doesn't--
Four.
One that doesn't want to anymore, so, he will in an extreme emergency, but--
Oh, Jeff?
Yep.
So, we have four counting him, three other ones, right?
Yes.
So, if we get into the situation that we have, till we fill the position or whatever, do we cut back hours, you know what I'm saying, that we, we don't have anybody out on patrol and bury it, you know what I'm saying, have to save hours all the time, or is there things, a way you can manage some of this stuff to, to make it work, you know, until we get, because I, what, as a city, we're, we're kind of sitting here, we're waiting on different things to come, come about, and I think we need to continue to advertise, just to see what we get, because what's the worst thing we do, we get a few guys that they, they want to be full-time, you know?
Can we, can we like advertise until a position is filled? So, like, if the position is filled in 20 days, it's filled in 20 days, or whatever.
So, are we going to broaden our search area, or what are we thinking about that?
Yeah, we talked about--
Yeah, we talked about Des Moines Register, where, where we advertise now, Facebook?
We did it on social media, and Scott was going to put it on the city administrative page marker.
Which, the city of, league of--
Yes.
Can add that there, chief. Because we talked about that signing bonus, this, there's some different verbiage for a, for a potential ad, as well as adding some more stuff about the, the community and all the outdoor recreation opportunities, and, and make sure that people are aware that quality of life is, is pretty high here in, in Lakeview.
No, that's not, you know, one of the big things, it's part of our DNA, it's a lifestyle, that's what we, we base our, ourselves on, and I think that we need to take a look and see what's, you know, there might be all sorts of candidates out there if we pump, push Lakeview first, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Just, I mean, there's opportunities here for, for good career. How long were you in it then?
I have 30 and a half years in September.
30 and a half.
In public service, yeah. I'm capped in my retirement, I reached my age.
Okay, all right, so it does make sense for you.
Been here, I think, 20.
20?
If you're, if you're thinking about a sign-on bonus kind of deal?
Yeah.
Are you putting like a, they have to be here for so long?
Yeah, I think with--
Yeah, it's like every six months, I think--
Every six months, we, we're--
Up to two years.
We did help Jeremy every six months ago, so.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's something that, that seems to, you know, I think that's becoming the norm, isn't it, more?
And there's a lot of places that are offering that, yes.
So, with you, the way it's worded in there though, so are you telling me it's a $5,000 sign-on bonus for how long?
They have to be with us for two years, is that what you're saying?
Was it? Yeah, it was two years.
So, you pay that $5,000, you break it down into installments?
We get $1,250, well, yeah, $1,250 every six months.
Six months, okay.
Do you have to put any kind of that wording in there?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Until we get here.
Okay, all right.
Yes, would you recommend that we start advertising for a chief?
I, I think I would, yep, but get that ball rolling, get that process rolling.
I think so too, a chief and an officer.
That could take some time.
And a lot of things that I know, that my guys don't, just because we don't spend that time, that I would have to show them, like how to operate the canvas, so I have administrative rights to that, nobody else does, just all sorts of stuff.
Yeah.
So, if we got a candidate and they were interested in starting earlier, you're okay with that, you're okay?
I would be wonderful with that.
Okay, okay, great. I think it's a good idea, and I think Des Moines Register is a definite for me.
Yes, I, I--
I was trying to get the cost together a little bit, and I didn't get to where I could get a cost estimate on that. It's going to be expensive.
It will, but I feel like we need to do that.
Or maybe just a week.
You don't, you don't think Minneapolis?
The candidates are training in Iowa unless you go to the camp.
Right, you, you have to be Iowa certified.
But you could advertise in Sioux City.
We could advertise in Sioux City, why don't we?
That's, that's a big move.
And then, do we want to--
You also have Council House, yeah.
Same verbiage, well, we don't have, they'll already be certified, but--
For the chief, I mean, it would have to be certified.
We'd have to come up with an ad.
Yeah, I've got a, an ad from last time that I could sort of work off of, and then we can proceed.
And then, how long do we want to, do we want to advertise that till a position's filled?
Yes.
You know, and I guess I'm a fan of, of saying, you know, if position's open till filled, then you have a first review of applications at such and such a day.
So, what do you think about broadening it out to Sioux City, Council House?
Who, who are we talking about? The officer or the chief?
Chief.
I guess I'd do both.
I would too, why not? What do we have to lose, except the cost of the ad?
Just the cost.
And, and, and the thing is, like you say, if you push the Lakeview lifestyle--
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I mean, that's going to be appealing to some people, I think.
I think that's a great idea, especially right now.
Quite can be good.
Yes, it can be.
And I, I know, Dave, I didn't change that, that last, submit the, the cover letter too, but, because I just didn't, I didn't make the change from the, from the previous one, but we certainly have the chief applications probably go to the mayor, if you're thinking. So, you look at all those, those areas that I listed about potential advertisements for the resort, Tri County Special Saxon, Carroll, Storm Lake, Des Moines Register will, will come up with something. Back in the day, it always used to be that you had to advertise in the Des Moines Sunday Register, you know, that has changed just so much, that it is much more, excuse me, related to the online advertising than, than it even is on the paper, so, I'll have to kind of wade into that a little bit. And, want to do something online, but it seems like if we do the register, they do, they do an online career builder, I think is what they use as their online.
I'm guessing that they all probably use online, the larger--
Yeah. And then you get some, some of them that are free workers development, league of cities' website, but please, I just listed a police officers Facebook page, I'm not sure what the organization really is, but we listed it there last time.
Yep, LE Iowa.
Lakeview Facebook page, Lakeview website, LE Iowa.
LE, yeah, it, it's a closed private group, just officers.
Okay, thank you to the committee.
Yes, thank you.
Resolution 2041, set salaries for, to fill in the blanks.
Well, we, we kind of talked about a 3% for Bill and Scott, and where we're at, and Royce, we were kind of, we were kind of unsure, you know, when you were going to, you know--
That's fine, you know, I'm good.
All right, I just want, you know, and I'm trying to be straight with you, Ruth. So, what we'll do is, leave Royce there, if he's happy with what he's, where he's at, and then we'll, that's my opinion, I don't know what you guys think, I'm hoping for discussion about it, you know, with us. Somebody else got any thoughts?
Does your high three figure into this?
What's that?
High three?
High five years.
High five?
Yep.
And is that like completed years, is that?
No, it's based off quarters. Your high, 20 quarters.
Okay.
Okay, resolution 2041 has 3% for Bill, 3% for Scott. I'll make a motion to approve 2041. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Add any-- So, what's the, what's the number then for, for the chief?
He said he's satisfied.
He just wants to retire.
Yep. Haven't had a two-week vacation in 30 years, so.
Well, only get, they have a--
All right.
Just in case, we appreciate you.
And who seconded it, that's a right?
You.
I am.
Anthony. Okay. And I, I just needed some clarification on this too, then, so we had three percent increase for Bill, and then we had talked about on-call time for Bill, so Bill's on-call, or he's handed off this morning, um, and about whether there is any additional compensation for the on-call time.
I thought...
I thought we discussed that.
I thought it was discussed, and it was supposed to be built into the, into his salary, and not paid separately. I'm not sure if we're on the same page here.
Well, that's fine, and, but then, that's, that's where it's at, is, I mean, it's three percent, and we just need, I want, I need to know for sure, I guess, whether that includes that on-call time.
That's not what I understood, it was the same as what the other guys got.
That's what I thought too, when we...
So it's, so you understood it was a dol, whatever, when you're on-call, you get a separate check, kind of?
Yep, for that week.
I see.
Well...
Well, I'm not against doing that, I just didn't, I thought it was presented to us a bit worse.
I thought you were the one that made, or said that that night.
I probably did, yeah.
Yeah, but I remember it.
I mean, I'm sure we had that, that discussion, and, and also that discussion about whether you just incorporate it into salary, because, because you're a salary person, it's not anything outside of that.
Yeah, I thought, I thought he was gonna get eight extra for it, but I thought it was gonna be incorporated into the salary, and I don't...
It doesn't really matter which way it goes.
I don't know that it does, I thought that's what we were told.
The end of the same result, right? Unless I don't know what weekends.
Right.
Right.
So I...
We'll give you three percent, and then we'll give you the on-call time.
That's what I assumed.
It was, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
I'll be clear.
Yeah.
Okay. There's Woody in there somewhere. Roll call.
On a roll.
Okay, Woltman.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes. City administrator report. Thanks, Mel and Scott and Royce for all you do.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, I wrote down Lagoon, but I really don't have anything additional, other than what we had seen out there tonight, so...
Just as long as, uh, make sure our engineers out there...
And we're updated constantly, what's...
If it continues to smell, we don't, we have to go.
Well, it's...
Need a big fan out there.
That's two separate deals.
Yeah, that's, that's like two weeks.
Yeah, I don't want to kind of...
So do you have a motion to adjourn?
Now, Royce, I guess there's one other thing, and...
I was just, yeah, summer employees, we had good summer employees this year.
They were busy.
Really, everybody did a good job.
Good, good. School's, school's starting for all these kids, and...
They're gone already.
Cindy's gone already, and, you know, one on the tenth, one on the thirteenth, it's just...
It's gone.
Some of the colleges are gonna zoom it all.
I do have...
Awesome, it's gonna be online.
Have one other thing, just, just, uh, an acknowledgement about, uh, the asphalt street work. See that the asphalt street work is done, and I've gotten some concerns, complaints about just knowing about Irwin Street, horseshoe drive, and Zine Circle, still getting a, a seal coat.
Is that the problem?
It...
I mean, what, is that gonna alleviate the issue?
It, yeah, it, uh, you know, there was some citizen concerns about the unevenness of the, um, of the asphalt backfill that was, was put in there, but yeah, they'll cover that up, and a seal coat ends up being a short inch, but it's a, it's an extra inch of cover over the, over the top of that asphalt.
But how is that gonna straight, yeah, how is that gonna straighten out the unevenness?
Lakewood Drive looked the same way when we did that road, and when it was done, it's nice and new. It's just, they'll roll that too, it's a, yeah, it's, it's a different crew that comes in to do that final, uh, seal coat.
So you had the same issue with, are you talking about Lakewood, no, you're talking about Lakewood Drive?
Lakewood Drive.
So Lakewood Drive, you had kind of uneven then before that last coat?
It looked exactly the same.
Okay.
Like, West Street, you know, we go on that with the bus every day, is that gonna solve the problem with the water sitting along the curb?
I could help.
It won't solve it, we're hoping it will help.
I can tell you what the deal is, Jerry, that's, that's the low point of the town right there.
Right.
You know, the water north of there flows, you know, in the bidock goes north, and the water there goes south. And you can't even drain there, because you're...
I know, I noticed that.
As the lake.
I went to the bus, I mean, that's a good place to get the wheels washed out every day.
Good.
So we're looking out there, Jerry?
We should build a, build a school.
I don't think the residents would think it was too big of a joke.
That's not gonna...
No, I do.
Yeah, sure.
Even new residents.
But I think that the other, the only other solution was to tear up the whole street, redo the whole sewer line, right? So...
Zoom it down.
No, you, the only way I think, I think you'd ever make it any better is if you pumped it out of there, because, you know, you gotta pump it up. It's gonna be better, because before it was all laying on the road.
Yeah.
Now the road's arched, you know, go down, and it don't give you, and that gutter's still, we got water in the gutter all over town, but it's gonna be better, it's gonna be the best we can do.
Yeah, see how this works, and...
Yeah.
It probably won't fix it, but maybe it'll help.
That, uh, that seal coat crew, a different crew comes in to do the seal coat, and they had said two weeks.
He said two weeks, when they started last Monday. And we're gonna do some drains like we've done, is that ten point doing that? Just that one by Morse?
Yeah, that's the only one that's...